All right, it's six o'clock, uh, calling the joint school committee meeting to order for Wednesday, October twenty-third, plus the twenty-fourth. Uh, first up on, dang it, it's pledge of allegiance.
With the flag, I am the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, and God, and we belong with liberty and justice in the book.
Uh, the media is being recorded by North Media and North Public Schools. If anyone else is recording, please just let us know. Um, just a quick thing before we get to the agenda, um. Just wanted to, uh, as we kind of for our first true meeting, uh, since the tragic loss of one of our students, Lily and Costello, a seventh grader at Norton Middle School, I just want to invite everyone to join me in honoring her with a welcome silence. Uh, in the face of such a tragedy, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to our superintendent Jennifer O'Neil, our director of counseling, and fair giving services, Vinnie Cersei, uh, Norton Middle School principal, Vinnie Hayward, and our entire administrative team. Uh, I also want to extend my thanks to chief of police Brian Clark and our dedicated school resource officers Jake Denne and Mark Rovershade. Our community partners at FPO and Health and Wellness Center led by Nicole, Corinne, Victoria, and Linda, and also the community councilings of Bristol, oh, sorry, the community counseling of Bristol County and Riverside Trauma, who have been invaluable and providing essential and ongoing support to our students and staff. Special thank you goes out to our teachers, staff, and students who came together during this very challenging time, ensuring that everyone had a space and support to grieve in their own way. I recognize that there are many others who have also contributed, and I want to send, uh, thank you to all of you as well. I'm immensely proud of how North Community and the school district have united in such a difficult moment. Please continue to reach out to one another. Your support is invaluable and truly can make a world difference. Thank you all. Uh, first up on the agenda is to approve the minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four, open session meeting. Has everyone got a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any concerns, anything to go along with them? A motion to approve events?
Over. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, warrants?
I reviewed and approved the following warrants: school expense warrants, September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars, eighty-one cents. October ninth, twenty-twenty-four, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eleven cents. School payroll warrants, September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four, one million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and nineteen cents. October thirteenth, twenty, uh, I'm sorry, October third, twenty-twenty-four, one million, two hundred and three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-six cents. I wish to enter them into public record.
You're sure? Uh, student prep update?
Good evening, everybody. From the JCS, the students of JCS are looking forward to a Halloween celebration next week, and all PK fifth third grade students are invited to bring their costumes to school and participate in grade, their grade levels. One of our teachers, Jen Early, and our SBO are organizing a group of JCS families to walk as part of the Garden Charlotte Day Halloween parade this Sunday, October twenty-eighth. Finally, the JCS community is planning to have a flag ceremony to celebrate remembering veterans. Veterans Day on the morning of Friday, November eighth, we have invited family members of JCS students who may be veterans to join us, and we are hoping to also include members of the American League.
From the university school, uh, it's a very busy time at Norton High School, fall sports wrapping up their regular seasons with every team. Plays to make the postseason tournament. Golf has already wrapped up their probably the most successful season in North's history. The golf team was national champions and placed seventh in the D-two state championship. Congratulations to coach Lamy, the local team. October has been, has been in both finish as a key month of future planning at high school. Juniors and seniors attended the college fair of more than sixty schools and universities, juniors with ESATs this week. To give everybody an exposure to tests necessary for post-secondary education. Next week's, next week sophomores will have a career day and an opportunity to give about twenty-five different local businesses and organizations about potential careers. Although, alternate month, various local businesses and military recruiters have been set up in the cafeteria during lunch providing job applications and information for. This will be ahead. We just finished up our APTO's scholastic book fair, which was a huge success this fall. Helped to refill and keep filling our book vending machine with exciting book choices for our students. On almost a daily basis, we give out about five points with the students, which the students use in the APTO book vending machine. Hey, students earn hashtags by showing our PBIS expected behaviors of being respectful, responsible, and safe, or get caught by an adult being kind, supportive, putting in amazing effort. Students are always doing such great work, and faculty and staff make an amazing point of seeing, so they give their knowledge unit and celebrating without giving these students hashtags. When students have accumulated their first fifty, they hand them in for a point. For every one hundred after students can get a point. A little over a month, students have earned over a hundred books. It has been sensational and has shown how positive our students are. We have also continued our practice of hashtag good news call of the day, where any adult who not nominated student for going above and beyond and be deserving of a book. Close this hashtag. Hashtag BNC of TD. So far this year, we have already done sixty good news calls. The students also automatically qualify for a point for a book from our vending machine. So as you can see, our students are doing sensationally and earning a lot of books. Our Monday, October twenty-eighth. On Monday, October twenty-eighth, our APTO is bringing in author George Cham to do two presentations, once each grade, on how he comes up with ideas for his books, and how he develops some driving new should be in these ones.
Very much. Good. Uh, opening of school remarks. Politician.
Evening, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to, to do this tonight. I appreciate all your hard work, obviously, for our, our school community. Uh, so Little School, Big Heart is off to a great start this year. Uh, so here I am in my third year in Norton Public Schools, and despite obviously the obstacles we sometimes face in the school community, I couldn't be happier to be here at LGN in Norton. Uh, I had a superintendent years ago told me, I was a new principal, and he said, it sometimes takes five to seven years to really get going as a school, to, for people to buy in, believe in you as a principal, to trust you. Uh, we've worked hard over the last two years, going into this third year, to build that trust as a team, and it's really kind of showing its, its fruits, uh, at this point. Uh, we're really getting going as a school community. It's a testament to the unbelievably hard work of our teachers and staff here at LGN, as well as the continued support of our students' families. Uh, we've had a lot of district initiatives over the last few years, as you know, new math curriculum, stepping stones, our new ELA curriculum in Intereading, uh, a new social emotional learning curriculum program, Character Strong. Uh, and we continue to build on the efforts of IMTSS that we started three years ago, even if it's in smaller increments at this, at this point. Uh, the adoption of and implementation of these programs depends on the dedication, as you know, and the success of our teachers. Um, I can't speak highly enough about our team here. Uh, back by popular demand this year, or maybe I'm just crazy, our school's video morning announcements. Um, one of the few good things that come out of the COVID shutdown, I continue to record a three to five minute video each morning, uh, to start our school day. Uh, we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, the LGN pledge, which includes our PBIS language and, and expectations of being respectful, responsible, and safe. Marty would say hashtag respectful, responsible. The daily happenings of our, of our little school. So we aim to include as much student voice as possible with segments. Um, as part of the digital equity team last year, I, uh, wrote a program in terms of our morning announcements and trying to get our kids more involved each day. Last year, we took some steps with our tasty tidbit segment. Uh, Mr. Place, our music teacher, was kind enough to write a jingle for it. Um, I encourage you to go on YouTube and watch, watch our videos. They're pretty hilarious at times. Um, and this year we have segments such as Hank Pink, Mrs. Hanewich's second graders, um, do a rhyming riddle every Wednesday. We have, uh, funny Friday jokes brought to us by siblings here at our school. Um, so a lot of fun things are going on each morning. Uh, we also celebrate birthdays each day. Uh, each student receives a book of their choosing to keep in order to celebrate their special day. Uh, our PTC, your parent-teacher connection, works to support this initiative as well as many others. Uh, we have many new board members this year who are bringing fresh ideas and energy to our already robust parent group. They hosted a very successful fall scholastic book fair two weeks ago, and even invited the Palagi Brothers Ice Cream Truck to be here in our apartment during family shopping, which, um, really helped our, our, our sales. And our teachers love the ice cream. Um, PTC is also helping to kick off our Booster-Thon fundraising on Monday. I'm excited for that. Booster-Thon is actually going to come and run that program for us. Uh, because our PTC board is fairly new and hasn't seen it in operation. Uh, but the fundraiser is such a, a great event for our school, brings in a lot of money as a fundraiser, and that will be held on Friday, November eighth. Our kids are always excited for that. I'm excited for that. We'll make a big deal of it. Um, a couple of other important initiatives that we started this year include our critical attendance team. Uh, newly formed after the chronic absenteeism committee did some important work this summer to improve our students' attendance. Our school team meets twice a month at this point to discuss working through the tiered supports we have in place for students and their families. Um, we hope to see, uh, an improvement in that as the year goes on and the years go on. We've also begun a really fun morning movement program, thanks to our wellness physical education teacher, Mrs. Kenny, called EASE, E-A-S-E, which stands for early activity starts education. Uh, Carolyn put together a slideshow with an introductory video for our, our faculty, staff, and students. I've shared it with our parents. It includes a wide variety of movement activities and games that teachers can use to start their day moving with their students. I know for a fact that Mrs. Lyons' class uses it every morning because I see them through their window as I'm on bus and car duties. Uh, dancing around, and I'm there acting like a, a crazy person as cars are passing by, dancing right along with them. Uh, it's just a fun way to get our students moving in order to settle their brains and bodies for a day of learning. Uh, the kids love it. The teachers have enjoyed it. Um, and thanks to Mrs. Kenny, it's one, one more thing that, that we're doing here that's a, just a positive thing for our kids and our, our families. We are looking forward to a really great year at LGN, and, uh, again, I'm super happy to be here and thanks for the opportunity to share this information with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins.
I'm loud administrator. I'm gonna stand because I don't want my back to everyone at the podium, but I also don't want to sit down. Um, the College Board's Advanced Placement Program offers high school students the opportunity to take college-level courses across a broad wide range of subjects, including math, science, history, languages, and the arts. These courses are designed to be as rigorous as first-year college classes, providing students with the opportunity to earn college credit or advanced placement if they score well on the corresponding AP exams. The benefits of taking AP courses extend beyond potential college credit. They help prepare students for the academic challenges of college, strengthen college applications by demonstrating a student's ability to succeed in challenging coursework, and can even save on college tuition by reducing the number of classes needed in college. AP exams, which are offered annually in May, are graded on a scale of one to five, with scores of three or higher often considered passing for college credit. The exams typically consist of a combination of multiple choice and free response questions. Norton High School enjoys a robust participation in the AP program with about a hundred and fifty-five students enrolled last year in courses across multiple subjects. Tonight, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize some of our current seniors for their outstanding performance in our AP program. Uh, so this is actually acknowledging the work that they did as juniors. Wait, so when you really think about it, um, the information and the scores that I'm going to share with you guys tonight are all from, um, when they were juniors in high school. Well, Shakti Arun took three tests and she received a five in U.S. history, uh, which is amazing, and I will hold on to this award. Um, Amara? No, that's okay. Amara took two and received, um, a five in English language. Uh, Jacob Berry. Come on, Jacob. Uh, Jacob Berry actually took five AP classes as a junior and received a score of five in three of them. AP Language, Statistics, and U.S. History. So incredible. I don't know how you're gonna top it this year, Jacob, but here you go. Congratulations. Come on, come on, our family, come on. How, what are you doing this year for courses?
Uh, AP Calc, AP, AP Psychology, AP Literature, and AP.
What, when do you sleep?
Oh, and AP Computer Science, yeah.
When, when do you sleep?
AP Economics is two tests.
Yeah. Alright, right here.
Congratulations. Alex Hankley. Come on, Alex. Uh, last year Alex took four AP exams and received a score of five in her U.S. history, all other great, great scores as well. Here you go, Alex. Congratulations. How's your course load this year, Alex?
Great, only two APs.
Alright. Thank you. Congratulations. Alright, James McKay.
Do not know where he is.
Something on change, yeah. So, um, this is gonna be like the Grammys when someone doesn't show up.
He has videos, videos.
Well, that's wonderful. Um, sorry, I'm gonna use my cheat sheet here. Four, uh, AP tests last year, a five in Bio and a five in Statistics. So here is the award. But, of course, we get a picture. I mean, why not, right? Of course. Alright, and Zoe Santos. Uh, last year as a junior, Zoe took four exams, all of excellent, excellent scores, and a score on the, uh, five on the pre calc exam. So congratulations, Zoe. The Callie here?
Yeah.
Come on, Sam. Congratulations. And then finally, we have Nora Watrous, who was not able to be with us, scheduled in five months, uh, four exams and a five on the AP Stats assessment. So, um, I think we'll hold on to this and make sure that our students that were not with us today, um, get their awards. I think, you know, we try so hard to make sure that we're recognized for a lot of different things. Um, sometimes it's athletics. Um, I love to bring them in for academics as well because that's so important for all that we do. So, thank you all so much for your coming out tonight and, um.
Uh, just a few words, unbelievable. It's, uh, it's always great to also kind of see what kind of goes on behind the scenes, if you will, and seeing our students with such high level of academic consent. Exactly what we all want. So, congratulations. Unbelievable job. Uh, I don't know if we, uh, we have any AP people up here, because I'm certainly not one. Oh, just the.
Oh, yeah, that's all right. I'm listening.
What's that, two levels before?
Yeah.
It's really amazing, and, um, we had a number of students that graduated last year that also would have been recognized. Um, unfortunately, we don't get the scores until late in July, so, um, I think it's very important to note that these guys were juniors and, and what an incredible, um, success story for all of them. Super proud. Um, keep working hard. They're all going great, great places. So, congratulations.
Anybody else?
Thank you. And you don't have to say anything.
Can I just mention that in addition to his AP, um, tests and scores, Jacob also presented at the housing conference last week for adults, um, stuff like just phenomenal.
He's got Jacob here a few times.
He actually presented, which proved you had, so, nice job. Thank you all.
Alright, next up is, uh, Sarah, Sarah's village presentation, um, Mr. Russell.
And so, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you guys once a year and just, uh, give an update on what we're doing with our grants and whatnot. So, here to give you an update. See if I can handle it. Oh, strike one.
Strike two.
Space tap maybe the bottom.
I said it was just a swipe.
That one.
No, no. Okay, here we go.
It takes a feature.
Fight for it, being happy for it. Again, I'm sending you a present here, I'm Mark. And, um, for those of you who don't know, um, we lost our daughter in two thousand seventeen, she had a mental health that we weren't aware of for the rest of her life. So in our honor, we've started a foundation. Um, and so our mission is to promote wellness and to eliminate stigma associated with mental health in young people.
Do that, I need you again.
Let's see if I can do it again. Okay. Okay, so we're trying to make this a little interactive this year. Um, so we, we have a couple of questions. So how much, um, is the grant that we have going to provide each year in Norton? And when does the answer? Shut it up.
I'm gonna go with sixteen thousand, one hundred and fifty.
Well, that's much you guys do suck, but how much are we willing to provide?
We didn't provide the answers.
Yeah, we did. Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand, close, yes. And then for how many years, how many times?
Ah, I should notice.
Three, three.
Three years. Yeah, we're starting on third.
Yeah, third year, yeah. And we did work with Norton in the fourth year, who didn't provide a grant. That is correct. That's pretty good.
So just, we wanted to go over some of the impact that, um, we've been working together on. And we meet with, uh, Dr. O'Neil and Vinnie to decide what, what we want to do and then, uh, move forward. So the very first thing, you know, appropriate, and that's why Nicole came out to, uh, to join us tonight is, um, two years ago, Vinnie's like, if you do one thing, please pick up the grant for, uh, EPO and E. So, uh, that was our opportunity, and so over the two school years so far, not so far this year, forty-four students, uh, two hundred and seventy-four counseling sessions for a total of twenty-eight thousand five. So, that's a real impact, helping kids out where they need it, and, uh, the program's amazing, and Nicole can give you a little bit more insight from the ground up or on the front lines.
So, yeah, we're at, we just got our referral for our forty-fifth student. Um, prior, I do want to do you guys, kind of, because prior to the two years, we're covering groups for us within the school. So we just started the grant then in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
So we're providing trust management groups in the school. We're doing it ahead of this year, but I haven't continued doing it, so we're not, shouldn't break it off. That works. Um, but yeah, we've just started with our forty-fifth referral, and it's been great. We, they've provided us with ten sessions per student that's referred. Some students use the entire grant, some don't use it the entirety of it. We can transfer them over to under their insurance. Or we've had the situation where, um, Mark and Cynthia and Sarah were wanting to extend the grant for students where there's just a crisis or a dire need and we're not able to do the transfer over to insurance. It's been very helpful, and I have to give Erin Shay major credit, because she's picked up a lot of the grant students for us.
Yeah, I want to say one of the other impacts, um, is that is the families and the students, especially the older students, are talking about to each other about this. So I know you've received referrals, I've received questions. Um, sometimes we use that in the grant, other times we're able to go straight to insurance. Or Nicole's not able to do that, we go to other agencies. But the point being is because of this, you know, it really matches the impact that you guys want to, to have, which is the stigma, right? The kids are like, oh, no, no, go here, call Nicole, talk to Mr. Service, talk to your guys' counselor, talk to your judgment counselor. They have it, you got it, it's been so beneficial. So it goes beyond just two hundred and seventy-four students and families. Really has gone out into the community, talked about in the soccer fields. Like, that stigma is great, yeah. So, I mean, that's, that's me. Yes, we want two hundred and seventy-four students, but that larger impact. In the world.
I was feeling good. I'm thinking back to this thing.
Last one. So, um, we have been, so the, the grant for the counseling is any school, aside from anywhere, but also there's, uh, focus sometimes in the high school. We've also looked towards the middle school. We brought in a speaker who engaged in five hundred and ninety students, and she, uh, talked about her own lived experience with mental health when she was an athlete, excellent student, and she just talked about not wanting to come out and, and say the struggles that she was going through. So it was a couple of grade sessions or one for each grade, and it was just really about what you are worth fighting for. So that was really well received. Simply get to have old, old week back in NMS, and then I felt like I was a rock star. But, uh, and then NMS started a peace of mind club. So we have the active minds club at the high school, and Lisa Daley and Tanya Benoit wanted to do something in the middle school, so they started a peace of mind club. Again, something peer-to-peer, students talking to students about, um, it's okay to not be okay, and, uh, to reach out if you need it. I think one of the other impacts that maybe we haven't even talked about is that, um, because of the work that these folks do, we have these community connections, right? And so the work that, that we did with, uh, the folks here led us to Jed High School, and we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant directly because of the connections that they made to our high school. Um, and when we talk about those two hundred and seventy-four kids, I want to make sure everybody understands that's at all levels. Yeah, so, um, there's that piece, but we also were able to use it for other grants. We've got some Destiny Grants, pretty significant, um, Destiny Grants, uh, around this work that I think have a lot to do with our ability to really say, hey, here's our connection within our community, um, with, with, uh, you know, uh, philanthropy groups and so forth. So it's, it really has a larger impact than just what they're presenting. And the last slide just says any question, but, uh, one, uh, yeah, so this is our fourth year, and, uh, one hundred percent of the money we raise, we put back into the community. So we're primarily supporting Norton and East and equal twenty thousand dollars to those students. And when we call them, they answer the phone. Um, we, we, they, they reached out, the folks all here, um, to offer support to our, our, our teachers and staff in the school right now. Um, we'll do, do them provide, provide sessions, folks wanted, so that's one way. Um, my other crazy idea was we were approached, uh, by Medway, that they're doing, working with a group that's doing AI counseling for. So it's a new kind of, uh, artificial intelligence program that they're piloting. They had asked us if we'd like to be part of it. Uh, it wasn't free, believe it or not. Um, so I went to these shows, and I said, what do you think? Let's try it out. As they always are, they're like, alright, let's give it a shot, let's see what happens. So, um, they really are there for different things, and whatever we need, they're there to support us and our students and staff. Thanks.
Do you have any fundraisers coming up that you can share with us or?
Uh, yes, yes, Saturday, yeah, Saturday nights are, uh, so we, um, initially when we started the foundation, we just asked friends to come with them. We probably have about four hundred, four hundred and fifty people that engage with us either through social media or a newsletter. Our uh, daughter-in-law is like director of communications. She gets paid in hugs, thank yous, uh, that's pretty much it. And then our son does the website. So we started with that. Then last year, we had, uh, um, one of our board members is one of Sarah's friends, so she said, Sarah, I'd love to dance. Let's do a Zumba fundraiser. I'm like, Zumba. Oh, I love it, but it's a good sweat. But, uh, so we did that combined with a small gathering last year, and then this year we did Zumba a month ago, and now we have this gathering at East End Country Club, uh, on Saturday. And so there are lots of people from Norton coming in, two tables worth. Um, so.
Lisa and Tanya are on your board, correct?
Yes, yeah, Lisa, yeah, Lisa and Tanya are on, on Lisa Daley, um.
Yeah.
On our board. So, yeah, so that's it, but at any time, anyone can just go onto our website, Sarah's Village, and, uh, someone in this room did go on recently and, uh, make a donation, so I appreciate that. And someone in this room did go on recently and make a donation, so I appreciate that. But so, yeah, that's a great way to donate. Again, 100% of what comes in, we put back into community. Any cost that we have with like the gathering or whatever that comes on Cynthia and Mark incorporated.
But by all means, though, what I'd like to, you know, enhance the partnership is as you have these events, you know, please reach out to us so we can kind of get it up to our communities as well. I know we have a pretty good intern in our student attendance office.
It went up to the entire.
To staff.
The staff, yeah.
I mean, I think it's been a great partnership. I've no idea you guys since, you know, since it started coming from us. So I'd like to see, you know, more engagement hopefully with our communities as well, so we can really get Sarah's message out there and support you guys, which ultimately supports us as well and our students. So it's a commendable effort by you guys. I've always been, you know, amazed at the amount of work and things you do for us. So definitely we can try and repay and get the word out there. Absolutely agree with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, of course, I have more that I want to say, but I'm typically the one that cries every time I say something. I'm just gonna say thanks.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
But Lena, just so grateful for this tremendous partnership. Mark and Cynthia have been so wonderful to us, to our community, to our students. And I, we can't say thank you enough because the impact that we have had, you know, 44, 45 students, the counseling sessions, the presenters that come in, the support that is given to our staff in times of... It's, it's really incredible, and we thank you for taking us up to need to share Sarah's message with us. Didn't do it without you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
How about the fours? Got Vinnie and Nicole come on?
You went in front of the board.
Front of the board, sure. She misses it. Awesome, thank you so much.
Alright, next up on the agenda, FY25 project.
So thanks to the town for our additional, awesome, great, FY25 budget. Our previous allocation for this year was $33,507. The additional funds, our new FY25 budget total is $35,535,600. The report that I gave you tonight just showed an additional $160,008 or two for our extra chapter seven funding that we received. We have not included the additional, the 321 yet. All those lines, we allocated to homeless transportation, the tuition for laborives, and the high school sped salary, Eric, line as well. 321, 292, we will allocate those in the next week or two, once we finalize discussions with the special.
Do we have any expenses coming in from act requests as well?
So those are like separate accounts that we receive from the town, and this report, but we can check right next year as well.
No, I was just curious, so I don't have capital, it just affects the...
So it'll be a totally different account instead of funds that way. But we are, just to say publicly, thank you to the town for providing on capital projects as well. One was the second set of payments for the premium boards that we purchased last year for the middle school. The second item was the replacement of the two groundwater heaters at Norton High School, which definitely happy that's gonna happen. And then the third was a new athletic bus, so it's a smaller mini bus. We currently have one, which is red, a little further, it's a red rocket. Not normal colors at all, but it was what we could afford at the time. And we've saved an incredible amount of money on athletic trips for smaller teams, shorter distances, field trips, Special Olympics, everything. So we're super excited to have this other small bus, and, you know, I think it'll be another great savings for us. Thank you to the town for that. We were also approved for $50,000 for schematic design for the Norton Middle School group. So we will hopefully find out late next week if we were selected as part of this year's program. So fingers crossed, all around. I did want to mention a few things to you about the additional staffing, the $321,000 that was there. So we are going to be posting the permanent building subs with a start date of November 4. So those will happen hopefully tomorrow. And I know that I met elementary principals earlier today, and they all have some people in mind for the most part. So those positions will get filled pretty quickly. We will also start with the elementary specialists, returning them to their 23, 24 FTE for November 4. The one position that might be a little bit tricky is our librarian, as she is currently working the other half a week as a reading specialist, so I'm going to work with her. And then working with the Norton Teachers Association around the teacher leadership positions. And what makes the most sense in terms of reinstatement? And how can we do this in a way that makes sense for roles and things that need to be done? So hopefully we'll have an agreement with them quite early in November as well. Finally, we have the art, the music at Norton Middle School, and then the reading and math positions. After conversations with the Norton Teachers Association, I'm actually going to post those as long-term subpositions over January through June. And the rationale for that is, number one, it allows teachers that are in classrooms, you know, as a classroom teacher, just staying in their room for the year. And one of my biggest hesitations was disrupting learning for children that have a teacher we want. To make sure that we're trying to be as consistent as possible. But having a long-term position that way at the end of the year, if we're able to maintain these roles, as we all hope we are, it will be posted through our regular union process. If we're interested, can apply for them and go through that. Our current transfer process for the September of 2020. From my perspective, I felt like that was the best option for us as a district to, as I said, maintain teaching and learning for all of our students and also give our staff the opportunity to move into those roles if they so choose.
Is that full form session, is that every semester?
That would be a January 2nd start, yeah. And then we also have some ideas about, like, if we can't find enough interest, we can... So we've got some ideas of how we can backfill in other ways we've done. There was a time when our Title I grant was a little bit bulkier than it is now, and what we did was we hired tutors. They were either retired teachers or perhaps teachers that were left the field and were home younger students and children and wanted to work three hours a day, a couple of days a week. And it was great because, you know, LGM teachers arrive at 7:30, but you really don't need to get started, like, pulling groups until eight, so people would start at eight. They might work till 11, you get paid benefits. So we're trying to be really creative about how we're gonna do this this year. So as I've said to all of you, I will never turn away money. We're thrilled to have it. We just want to make sure we're doing it in a way that is, that maintains teaching and learning for our students. Super thankful to all of you for our advocacy and for the community as well.
Any questions, concerns? Other business? Just spending 48 hours?
Nope, what am I asked?
I got two things. One, I think someone measured it, but Norton Veterans Council, they're doing their Veterans Day grade. One of us is obviously help promote, obviously it's held on Veterans Day, Monday, November 11. And anyone who's welcome to do March or at least attend the grade. We're going up to Yale School, kind of up the secondary entrance of Norton High, then down to the memorial here before you turn right onto a plane shoot. That's that one. And then just to echo kind of Jen's words about obviously town meeting on Monday night. You know, thank you to the community, obviously, for coming out and voting and giving us a little bit of positivity and hope going forward. Now, I think the school committees, you know, saying, we're trying to, you know, with the free cash that we did have, is trying to come back and, you know, bring back some of the positions that we felt were kind of giving us the best things for the box. Thank you for the community and the, you know, like, and a point of the circle to kind of help guide that process as well. Good to see, I think it was a good time to look for what helps sort of... Any other other business? All good. And then motion to adjourn?
Second.